It's called order of the regular city council meeting of January 27, 2014 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty, Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
We have a court, thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation speaker, please Pastor Pete Vosler of Crosswind's Assembly of God. Welcome Pastor.
Let's pray. Lord, you are so good to us here in the city of Sparks as we look around in these last years that have been a lot of work, but good things have come of it and I pray that your blessings would be upon our mayor, our city council, give them great wisdom. Thank you for the police department, the fire department, and all those who keep us safe and we just invoke your blessing upon us knowing that without you we're nothing. Blessed is Lord, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor for those kind words. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance Mr. Smith, would you please? Please go join me please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next I have comments from the public. If you want to speak under comments from the public, please go to the clerk and fill out one of these cards. First I have Doug Bucy. Come on up Doug.
My name is Doug Bucy and we're here to present two items today about the current future status of the DeAndrea Golf Course. The DeAndrea Golf Course is comprised of six parcels. A document dated June 18th shows Washoe County taking the deed for five of these parcels, which are from three to four years behind in tax payments. These five parcels were auctioned, were to be auctioned off in April 2014. After we presented information to the Washoe County Treasurer, we received the following statement. "I recognize that although the taxes for the golf course are billed under six different parcel numbers, the course can be considered one economic unit and that economic unit is a key component of the DeAndrea planned community. As such, I have determined that it would serve the public interest to provide that any and all tax delinquent DeAndrea Golf Course parcels be offered at the same and not separate tax sales. Accordingly, I have notified the Board of County Commissioners that I have withdrawn the five parcels noted above from the April 2014 tax sale. Any of these parcels, as well as the additional golf course parcel which remain unredemed, will be included in the next group of tax delinquent parcels submitted to the Board of County Commissioners for authorization to be sold in April of 2015." Item number two. The DeAndrea Handbook was updated October 10, 2013 to include 72 lots requested and approved by the city of Sparks on November 23, 2009. The tentative map for this project has expired. This will require the city of Sparks to review this project should it be resubmitted. In consideration of the county treasurer's information, any resubmission of the request for approval of the 72 unit Monticello project include what was originally submitted. This included the moving of two golf holes, which is part of the DeAndrea Handbook having an 18-hole golf course. The permit should contain all infrastructure for electrical, water pipes, drainage, two lakes, et cetera, that are contained in the documents when this project was originally approved. If the project is resubmitted different from the original project, it should require a complete review by the city of Sparks, provided is a copy of the documents signed by the city of Sparks and a proposal for the project. This is the same information provided to the DeAndrea community homeowners prior to applying for the permit and had the approval of the community homeowners at that time. Your continued interest in the DeAndrea community is appreciated. And there's only one of these books, but you can see here, I gave one to Gino, but you know, it has an actual definition of the project and it was also included on the full architectural prints that were presented to the homeowners at that time.
Thanks Doug, I'll get this to the clerk and I'll get this to the clerk and then she can pass it out to the rest of the council. Do you have a question Mike?
Yeah, sir, what did you want from us?
The support of anything as things come in like permits or anything like that, that they follow, you know, what I stated here. The original handbook. Yeah, by the handbook. Which I prefer, we have to. Yeah, we have to. Yeah, right, absolutely.
But there's no, there's no golf holes anymore.
Well, it's similar. It's just dried up. And there are three to four investor interested, but you have to talk about the price of what it'd be sold for. And that's the stage it's at right now, we just want to make sure that, you know, that one of the things if you look at it, if they sold the parcels individual, somebody thought they might build a home on it, well then there'd really be a mess if they had split it up the six parcels into individual parcels to sell.
Yeah, but I don't think, okay, I won't debate it right now, but I don't think you can do that because it's either going to be open space or a golf course, I think that's how the handbook read. Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
You want to make sure it stays as a golf course or open space? And that's what you're asking?
Well, the golf course is primary, but definitely open space, but with investors out there, it is possible to become a golf course again.
Right, which would be optimal, but if it stays as open space, that would be just fine also.
Oh yes, definitely, better than homes or ever, yeah. And can this, can you put this as part of the? I'll put it on, yeah, I've got it, I'll make it part of the record. Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, we've got some more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just curious from the staff, has this, has this tentative map actually expired or is there a one-year automatic extension with that?
For the record, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, Council Member Schmidt, my understanding is that the tentative map has in fact expired.
There's no, there's no extension on those?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Doug, thanks for coming in today. Wait, I want to ask you a question, don't leave yet. So according to this letter, they're going to put it up for sale for back taxes a year from this April.
Right.
And there's some liens attached to this golf course too.
Yes.
Do you know how much they are?
No, I don't know what all the liens are.
I've been talking to some people that are interested in the golf course doing the liens quite a bit, but I'm with you, I want it to be a golf course. And it will be a golf course.
Thank you.
Or nothing.
Yeah.
Well, we were hoping somebody would buy it and get a golf course.
Okay, thanks.
File up the sale.
Okay, next is Ron McGee.
One of them.
To report in that I've wasted like $10,000 to $20,000 of taxpayers' money dealing with Sparks PD and the courts over the last few months. And it all started basically because I'm native Indian, I'm a disabled veteran and I don't have a birth certificate. But I have a DT24 and where I can get a passport, I can go to Philippines, but I can't get a Nevada license. I could have and it got a little worse because I have an 80 BMW collector car that wouldn't quite pass smog, but I didn't want to lie and say I drove less than 5,000 miles, they would have given me the license. But they wouldn't, so I kept getting temporaries and I kept getting tickets like that from Sparks PD. Then I go to court, win them all, except one, the driver's license. $305 ticket because they said I was disqualified for being a non-birth certificate member, which is, I'm not the only one out there, which could cause me some problems later down the road, but I've been had a lawyer working on it for seven years. Judge Spoo expected me to fix it in 30 days, well it didn't happen. So when I go back, they even wrote the ticket, the thing up wrong, they said it was car tags, but it was actually driver's license, $305. I could have done road work two days and 105, I chose, well, I shouldn't have paid you 305, but didn't really want to go to jail. Nice people out there though, but they, it flunked metric motors couldn't get it to pass. Then on top of it, I have a disabled plate waiting for me at the DMV, so that wouldn't happen, but they won't give it to you unless you pass smog and if it gets failed smog locked in the computer, you can't get it out of the computer till you pass the smog. It's kind of humorous, but anyway, on top of that off, I'm going to skip a little bit to December 19, 8:30 in the morning, one of your Sparks PD, I hope the chief was here, I don't know his name, but the guy was driving, texting, driving his police car. And I know, I have a witness too, besides me. I think that's a poor example. It was his personal, it wasn't a police, police phone, because they put it on the dash, you know, GSP and all that. I don't have one of those new cars, but my girlfriend does and it all, the phone comes up there. And then I'm going to skip over a little bit, I'm really disappointed in the rental laws and I'm disappointed in the Spark, Reno City Council and Sparks not showing up at the senior center. The only one ever shows up is Gino and her before she got elected. Good memory. That's when the judge was there, the one that passed away?
Senior Center.
He was there the same day. Have a great memory. So I'd appreciate, I'm glad you stopped, he stopped by for the Christmas party twice. So anyway, they have a lot of these things here, the seniors are really getting abused out here. The last part I'm going to say, I get challenged as a senior, I'm 69 Friday, and I'm going to go over just a little bit, I worked with the governor coming up with a little blue sticker, the big one, only size it down, so we can wear them and not get challenged.
Need to wrap it up Ron.
Okay. And I'm a next boxer, so on profile, is a dangerous handicap by Sparks and Reno PD.
Thank you.
So I hope I wasn't too much.
Yeah.
Thanks for the ticket.
Okay, next is the approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for motion to approve? Mr. Schmidt?
Agenda's written.
To have second, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agendas outlined by staff, any further discussion, seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 3.1, consideration of possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting for January 13, 2014. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions, Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve.
You have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Lawson to approve the minutes of January 13, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 4.1 is a proclamation for National Radon Action Month, is there someone here to accept this? Come on down. I'll go ahead and read this and then ask you to say a few words if you wouldn't mind. Sparks Proclamation. Whereas many residents of the city of Sparks don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and well-being of their families, and whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that may threaten the life and health of our citizens and their families, and whereas the challenge is that we can't see, smell, or taste radon, so it's, it's easy to forget that radon may be a problem in homes, schools, and any building in the city of Sparks, and whereas radon is the leading cause of lung cancer for non-smokers in the United States and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers, and whereas the US EPA estimates 21,000 people in the United States die each year from the lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunken driving, falls in the home, drowning, or home fires, and whereas any home in Sparks may have elevated levels of radon even if other homes in the same neighborhood do not, and whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive and when identified the problems can be fixed, and whereas the US Surgeon General recommends all homes be tested for radon and fixed if they can have four BCIL or greater levels of radon, and whereas the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the US Environmental Protection Agencies are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim January 2014 as National Radon Action Month.
Specifically, the Nevada Radon Education Program. I would like to thank the city council for presenting us with this proclamation, has these helped raise awareness for citizens to recognize radon as a serious health problem. This is the fourth year that the council has given us a proclamation and we greatly appreciate it. According to experts, living in a home with an average level of four pico curies per liter of air presents the same risk as to developing lung cancer as somebody who smokes about half a pack of cigarettes a day. The good news is that you can reduce your risk for this type of lung cancer by testing your home and by fixing it if you have elevated radon levels. The radon potential here in Sparks is 7.9%, so of homes tested, 7.9% found elevated radon levels. Now, but don't be fooled by this statistic as it's only the percentage of homes tested, not all homes in the city of Sparks. Let's see, zip codes 89431 and 89441 have a radon potential of 15% and 14%. And because this is January and it's National Radon Action Month, we offer free test kits to all Nevada residents from now until the end of February and you can visit our local office in Reno at 4955 Energy Way to get a free test kit or call our hotline 1-888-RADON10 or visit our website radonnv.com. Thank you again.
Thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, but we have another proclamation today that Mr. Schmidt's going to read for Kristi McCullough Day and the Challenger.
I believe we have some folks here from the Challenger School that...
Come on up. Mr. Schmidt will read the proclamation, then it will give you a chance to do some talking.
Thank you and welcome. Whereas on August 27, 1984, President Ronald Reagan announced that a school teacher would be chosen as a first citizen passenger to fly into space aboard the space shuttle to remind America of the crucial role teachers and education play in our life and our nation. And whereas a 37-year-old social studies teacher, Sharon Krista McCullough, was selected on July 19, 1985 from a field of nearly 11,000 applicants to participate in Mission 51L, NASA's first educator astronaut in the teacher in space project, and whereas Mission 51L lifted off from Kennedy Space Center on January 28, 1986 with millions of American schoolchildren watching and listening as a Challenger disaster unfolded. And whereas the Challenger tragedy inspired a generation of Americans pursue careers in math, science, and technology, led to discussion of engineer's safety and workplace ethics, and whereas the Challenger Learning Center of Northern Nevada was established at Sparks High School to serve students and teachers in Washoe County School District and throughout Northern Nevada. The center is committed to using students' enthusiasm for space to create innovative learning experiences for imaginative young minds and as a first teacher in space, Krista McCullough intended. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 28, 2014, Krista McCullough Day.
Thank you Mayor and the council members. We're excited to be able to bring this project to a new phase, it's been a seven-year journey for us, we've had a chance to speak with you before, this will be the first and only Challenger Center in Nevada in a network of about 50 around the world. We're thrilled to be based at Sparks High School, great school, we're going from railroads to rockets and we're excited about the prospects that this holds for our students and also for our economy as we continue to pursue aerospace education. So it's a new era, we'll be starting comet missions hopefully very soon. Board members like Dr. Simmons, who is NASA person himself and served at NASA from Skylab through Apollo era, has been involved in this project and we're getting very close to being able to offer missions, so we're excited to be able to provide a sneak preview tomorrow to Mayor Martini and continue to do good things as we help our students here in Northern Nevada continue to reach for the stars, so thank you for your support.
It's open to any of the council people that they want to come tomorrow.
Absolutely, we would love to have them.
1:30 at Sparks High School. Where in the building is it at?
We are at the edge of the football field, so if you pass the caboose at the end there and head down the access road, we're in the last brick building on the end, which many years ago used to be the auto shop, yeah. And so that's been transformed, there's now in development and in construction a mission control module and a spacecraft simulator module, so those are being brought online. We have gentlemen from the Challenger Center in Washington DC that are over there actually right now, plugging in computers and doing all kinds of good work. We're going to be flying a flag that was flown in Washington DC on this date, on, so 28th, I'm sorry, the 28th last year in honor of the Challenger 7 crew, so we'll be raising that for the first time there at the high school and unveiling a portrait of the crew members as well that will be hanging in mission control.
You know, this is great, I know you've been working on it a long, long time and I think it's wonderful that's coming to Sparks High School and you've been working on it over there, so congratulations. Mr. Schmidt, do you have something to say?
I just want to say congratulations and thank you for all the work to make in this reality project. In my early years, I had lived just outside of Cape Canaveral in Florida, my father was systems control for Gemini's Mercury Programs there before he went to do aircraft work and I remember my days fondly of Cape Canaveral and Edwards Air Force Base, it's a great program, so thank you very much for all the hard work to bring this to the city of Sparks.
We thank you for your partnership and the teamwork and the ceremony will be at 1:30 tomorrow and we look forward to recognizing our crew and also our project, so thank you for helping us to do that.
I'll, I'll bring this with me tomorrow, is that's okay?
That's perfect.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.8.
Mr. Ratty?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.8, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, on to 6.1, winners of the Christmas parade, who's doing this? Francine? Perfect.
You have a list there?
I have no list. Okay. Oh, it's on the item. Do you want me to call them up one by one? The 2013 winners for vehicles was Thompson Garage Doors. I lost my hat, wait a minute. Let me condemn.
Congratulations. You won a award.
It's a given. Okay, for the community award goes to the Reno Rodeo Association. Thanks pal, appreciate it. Okay, for the marching band, this is always my favorite and they've won twice in a row, it's the mayor's own marching band.[1638.62][1638.62](applause) Anybody here see that?
I think it's tough time because they're in school, but I also have one for you.
Oh great, thank you.
It's your band.
You know, I listen to them every year, it's a wonderful band, they do a great job, so I appreciate what they do. Okay, the business award goes to KLO TV.[1666.43][1666.43](applause) About that, we got a good-looking girl.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, the annuals award goes to Palomino Valley Pet Rescue.[1696.62][1696.62](applause) Flop goes to Sparks Heritage Museum.[1719.82][1719.82](applause) Come on up ladies, get over here, come on. Come on over. Thank you all for that. Costume group goes to the Young Pioneers, I wonder where they're at. Congratulations Doug, turn around, face the camera. You got to get over here in front, pal. Thank all of you, we appreciate it, you guys are wonderful. For best of parade. And then last but not least, is for best of the parade goes to the Sparks Heritage Museum. Thank you all very much for being in the parade. We really appreciate it. It's a wonderful parade. It goes great every year, and I was very surprised at how many people were there with the weather, the way it was. I didn't think we were going to have much of a crowd, but it was a terrific crowd. Thank you all so much. All right, let's move on to 6.2. Consideration possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission, and this is a reappointment, Mr. Carey? You got it, Sean, or you just want me to do it? What's that?
I'm having technical troubles.
Okay. This is a reappointment of someone that's been on the, this would be a second term for this particular person. It's for Barbara Sanders, and she got approval from the Planning Commission to re-up, and she would like to. So that would be my recommendation. Ms. Ratty?
I would like to confirm the appointment, the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission of Barbara Sanders.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Barbara Sanders as the reappointment to the Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.3 is consideration and possible approval of appointing a member to the Tourism and Marketing Committee.
This item is brought to you on behalf of the Chair of the Tourism and Marketing Committee, Mr. Ron Schmidt. With the changes at the Nugget became necessary for the third member of the Tourism and Marketing Committee to be appointed by the city council. One of the laws that were established for this committee, we do receive a list from the Nevada Resort Association, and that list is to be forwarded to the city council for your deliberations and actions. It's been placed before you, the name of David Zaromin, and as a member of the Nevada Resort Association, he does represent a property in the city of Sparks, and it is, that is the list that's provided to you, and staff looks forward to your action. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Be happy to make a motion if you'd like to. Any questions from the council?
Any questions? Go ahead.
David is the Executive Director Vice, excuse me, Executive Vice President of Marketing of the Nugget, so I move to appoint Davis Zaromin as a member of the Nevada Resort Association who represents a property of the city of Sparks in the Tourism and Marketing Committee.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the appointment as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.4 is consideration and possible approval of the 2014 inter-local lease agreement with Washoe County School District Transportation Department. Welcome, Sean.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. This is just our annual contract that we do with the School District Transportation Department. They provide the busing for our youth programs to our different field trips and such that we take throughout the year when the kids are out of school. Any questions?
Questions, Ms. Ratty? Nothing? Okay. Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to adopt the 2014 inter-local lease agreement with the Washoe County School District Transportation Department as outlined by staff.
Mr. Schmidt? Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agreement with Washoe County. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.5 is consideration and possible acceptance of a grant from the Nell J. Redfield Foundation in the amount of $50,000 for the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department to continue various programming. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. This is for, we've received this for the last few years. The programs that the funding supports is the Leisure Without Limits Program, so our programming for special populations. And it also supports the Nell J. Redfield Free Playground Program that happens in the summer at Ardmore Park, where the food bank participates, bringing food. We have a partnership with them. Anyway, that's the summer programs. Let's see, we do the Adventure Day and things of that nature for the people with disabilities as well.
Great. Any questions? Just a comment, you know, it's great of the foundation to do this every year. Without it, I don't think we'd be able to do these programs very successfully, so it's wonderful that they step up, and I'm so pleased that you guys work with them every year and get this grant, because it's really special for us and we need to have it every year, so.
It is.
Looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Yeah, I would absolutely echo that. I know that the foundations have been pressed with lots and lots of needs over the last several years, and that Redfield has been so consistent, is just amazing, so thanks to them. And thanks to staff, because the act of writing the grants and taking the initiative to make sure that it gets done is an important part of that as well. So I will definitely make a motion to accept this grant from the Nell J. Redfield Foundation in the amount of $50,000 to continue the programs for underserved residents.
You have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.5 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.6 is consideration and possible affirmation of the city, affirmation of the city of Sparks is intent to participate as a member of the Home Consortium with the city of Reno and Washoe County. Mr. Rundle?
Mr. Rundle, Senior Planner here to present to the council, the Washoe County Home Consortium is made up of cities of Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County, with Reno being the lead agency. It's essentially the regional mechanism to obtain state and federal funding for affordable housing projects in our area. We recently completed the affordable housing project over off of Sullivan, I believe it's called Aspen Village, and that was, I think, built, or a CVO was issued within the last month or so. Every three years, the federal housing and HUD, as we all call it, requires that the participating agencies, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County, adopt an interlocal agreement. In 2011, the city council adopted a renewing interlocal agreement, and essentially HUD is now asking that we want to maintain that renewing, the agreement that renews by confirming. So essentially, they've asked Sean Carey, the city manager, to inform HUD that we would like to stay in the housing consortium and participate. And so, city manager is requesting direction to the city council.
Jim, thanks. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Any reason why we wouldn't want to participate? That's the obvious question, you know, obviously.
What's the downside?
The downside would be, if, yeah, it would be a complicated question, I suppose, but the best answer I can give is, I believe that it's appropriate to continue to participate. I don't know what year it was, but the three jurisdictions decided to consolidate the efforts so that we could obtain enough funding to do projects. The problem with, if Sparks were to pull out, is our funding would be at such a minimal amount that we wouldn't be able to fully fund a project like we did at Aspen Village. So as of today, my recommendation is that we stay in the consortium.
Thank you. Plus, we get some terrific projects out of this consortium doing that.
We do. We, the consortium, I'm a member of the Technical Review Committee. We make a recommendation to the directors, which is the three managers, and they make a recommendation to the Regional Planning Governing Board, which recently approved a project for senior housing on Fourth and Lincoln, so that'll be another project coming to Sparks. There's also been the other projects we've done on city hall apartments. So numerous projects have been done in the city of Sparks that may not have been done if we were not a member of the consortium, because we're able to pool the money between the three jurisdictions.
Okay, any other questions? Not looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Ed.
I move to affirm the city of Sparks' intent to participate as a member of the Home Consortium with the city of Reno and Washoe County as the Washoe County Home Consortium.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.6, to intend to participate as a member of the Home Consortium. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Excuse me. 6.7 is consideration and possible direction to initiate an amendment to Title 20, providing compliance with Assembly Bill 87 relating to public schools requiring consistency among local governments zoning ordinances with respect to development standards in Washoe County. Go ahead, Mr. Rundle.
Jim Rundle, Senior Planner here to present this item. The mayor directed staff to come back and ask the city council to vote on directing staff to work on this code amendment. The code amendment was approved, well, essentially legislation approved by the state legislature in the last session. The governor signed it into bill, requiring the entities in Washoe County who have development or zoning standards, which would be Reno, Washoe County, and the city of Sparks, to work collaboratively with the Washoe County School District to adopt the same standards in all three zoning codes for development of new schools within Washoe County. This would, this affirmative direction today would have staff bring that back to the city council to change our zoning code. The upside, I guess, to this legislation would be, when we worked with the other jurisdictions, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County School District, they, the consensus was to adopt what we already have in our zoning standards, so we used Sparks parking standards and Sparks setback standards for construction of new schools. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Did you have some? Mr. Kerrigan?
On the, so what are we going to do, adopt the least restrictive? Is that how it's going to be? Or the most restrictive?
Well, I'm not entirely sure what Reno and Washoe County standards were for schools, but we took, we took what our parking standards were and some of our setback standards for a new school. We will put them into our, what we proposed, if the council directs staff to move forward with this, is that we would put them in our design standards, and of course, we would still require a site plan review, where we can review the application by the school district and make sure that it is appropriate for where it's going, but...
Yeah, we're just giving directions today to go ahead with the standards, and then you're going to bring them back for council approval.
Agreed, yes. That's what we would do.
Well, yeah, but I'd like to have the council at least put their input in if we want to do the least restrictive or more restrictive.
And we can do that, the problem with the legislation, well, I'm giving an opinion, is that, because a lot of legislators thought it was okay, so they approved it, but, is that the standards are to be implemented by February 28th. So we were put under the gun to get this to the city council and bring it forward. Now, on the flip side, I don't believe that there will be construction of a new school in the next month.
Yeah.
So with that in mind...
Yeah, but that didn't answer my question, though.
I'm sorry.
My question was, and this is for the city council, do we want to go restrictive or less restrictive? Because I think we have the most restrictive, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Neil?
For the record, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. Actually, Councilmember Kerrigan, we have some of the least restrictive when it comes to processing of schools and development standards of the three local governments. So what we're seeing is, the staff, the work that staff has done with the other agencies has positioned Washoe County and Reno to move their standards more in our direction when it comes to, in terms of doing things via administrative review versus a public hearing. So I think that the school district was quite satisfied with how we do business here in their regard when it comes to schools in Sparks.
Well, that's right.
And the other two agencies are willing to more or less match up with what we're having.
Okay, great. That works for me, then.
Okay, so you're going to, you're okay with them fashioning towards...
I always, I always like it when they follow us.
Yeah. True story. Okay. Anyone else, Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I think when this bill first came out, we called it the lowest common denominator bill, and the intent was to speed construction and approval process to get the schools out on the market faster. There was a lot of work that went on with Kim Robinson, the Director of Regional Planning, and clarified a lot of that with Assemblyman Daley to come to a more conclusive, right way to do it, you know, where we're not sacrificing, let's say, you know, the number of restrooms in a high school to speed something to market. From what I remember, I mean, the bottom line is, yeah, we want to, I think we only get one public hearing out of this, if I remember correctly, and then it has to go to approval. So using our code, I don't think is a bad thing, and I know we're a little less restrictive, but there are a couple of things that Assemblyman Daley put in there that make us have to follow their track from the state.
Ms. Ratty?
I just want to make sure that I understand. So in doing this, we're initiating the code amendment to align it to what the state law says, but we're also, have we already had the conversation with the other jurisdictions?
We have had several conversations with the other jurisdictions, and as a group of staff, we have arrived at what we believe is a recommended code to adopt that we will all, that will have us all on the same page.
Okay, so you expect the other jurisdictions to be bringing forward identical standards by the February 20th?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
This only apply to public schools, not private charter, anything like that?
It's, the amendment is for public schools.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to direct staff to initiate a code amendment to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to comply with the requirement set for in Assembly Bill 87.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, 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 excuse me.
Nevada.
For my English-speaking friends, I would be Ratty, and Mr. Lawson is the second for 6.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. 6.8 is discussion and possible approval of Resolution Number 3252, supporting the governor's concept to create local veterans' commissions.
Caleb, come on down.
Oh, good, Caleb.
Caleb is the Director of Military and Veterans Policy within the governor's office for the state of Nevada. He's appointed position, and you've been there for, since the governor's been governor, I believe.
Recently moved there from the Nevada Department of Veterans Services.
That's right. You got a promotion.
Happy to be where I am.
Caleb's been directing different organizations to try to support our veterans throughout the state, and in my view, the benefits that they've earned by just simply being in the military and serving our country. I think the programs that they're putting together and the support, I mean, you've got some veterans up here, there's veterans in the audience. So Caleb, why don't you just take off and tell them what the governor's done and what you're asking for today?
Happy to do so. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as a proud Sparks native, happy to be back here today, although I've taken quite a circuitous route to get here since I graduated from Reed High School in 1998. I am, as Councilman Smith said a minute ago, I was previously the Director of the Nevada Department of Veterans Services, and now with the governor's office, running his military and veterans' policy, and again, happy to be here today to talk about this new initiative that our office has been working with Councilman Smith and some of your counterparts throughout the state. And I'd like to just, as briefly as I can, go over how we got to where we are today through the Green Zone Initiative, which is our, the initiative that this falls under. So the purpose of the Green Zone Initiative is to establish a statewide collaborative model and strategy for policy development... model and strategy for policy development to improve the delivery of services and benefits to service members, veterans, and their families. The idea is to create a statewide architecture to prevent barriers or break down barriers between service providers and to build as collaborative of a model as we can going forward. We focused on three areas for all of the veteran services out there, wellness, employment, and education, and we based it on three assumptions. The first assumption is, right now, now more than any other time, we have a sea of goodwill. There's more goodwill towards service members, veterans, and their families than at any other time, and we need to capitalize on that. The implication there is, five, 10 years from now, when the troops are home from places like Afghanistan, perhaps there won't be as much focus on it locally and nationally as well. The second is, we don't believe that there are any top-down, and we mean national or state-level, top-down solutions to solving these issues, but rather, the third assumption, we have to have a grassroots, hands-dirty model to ensure that we're connecting with folks who can use the services and benefit from the services. So that architecture I was talking about earlier starts with the Interagency Council on Veterans Affairs. That's myself and 10 agency directors for the governor, federal representative and a local government representative, as well as members of the nonprofit community. Again, identify gaps in resources, identify barriers, identify overlap, and develop policy recommendations going forward. Going through the different areas, the, the three focus areas, each one of them has its own individual focus area effort as well, and I won't go spare you the details on all of those. And the most important piece of this is what we call the Veteran Community Councils. So working with Councilman Smith here, Councilman Delgado in Reno, and Commissioner Young, and county commissioners and city council members from all over the state, we've developed this model of an MOU signed between the Nevada Department of Veterans Services and the elected official to create bodies of stakeholders and service providers at the local level to really do the grassroots work of identifying resources, identifying veterans in need, and connecting the two through outreach efforts and so on and so forth. And again, thank you for your leadership and participation in that so far, Councilman Smith. Another development in the Veteran Community Council model was, a couple of months ago, I know you know, Mr. Mayor, we worked with the League of Cities and the Association of Counties to create a joint commission, standing committee between those two statewide groups to address veterans' issues. I know, I believe, if I remember correctly, you were a volunteer on that committee as well. So that is, I promise you, and Councilman Smith has had to sit through my spiel too many times, as quickly as I can go through it, but we want to take it to the next phase. Again, if we, we see the window closing for veteran services and veteran support in the next five years, we want to institutionalize that support as much as we can. For instance, moving the Interagency Council on Veterans Affairs from an executive order into statute was our goal, and we accomplished that goal, and that body will move forward and always be there to develop policy recommendations into the future. We, we, again, we worked with the League of Cities and NACO to help formalize that group as well. We'd like to move the Veteran Community Councils from the MOU, which is a formalization of it, into locally created government, governor, excuse me, local governor, government commissions or advisory boards. These commissions or advisory boards would be much like the city of Reno's Parks and Recreation Commission, which I sat on for several years, but specifically focused on veterans' affairs and veteran services at the local level. We think there's an opportunity for local governments, whether they're city or county, to partner and, and join their services where they are. Washoe County, for instance, provides the tax abatement through the assessor's office. They've just hired two new veteran service officers, and each of your, or the city, city of Sparks, rather, has, has services as well. So North Las Vegas has recently approved this and has been our first city and local community, rather, to formalize this process through a local resolution, and I can go through the duties, but I'm sure that there may be some questions and that sort of thing. So that's what we're here in front of you today for, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Caleb. Questions for Caleb? Mr. Smith?
Just some comments. This organization is a lot informational for veterans that don't know what they, what they're entitled to, not only recent returnees from Iraq or Afghanistan, but World War II or Vietnam veterans. All of these veterans, we had, we did have a meeting at the county not too long ago, and with an informational table, and it was pretty packed. I mean, there was a lot of people there with a lot of questions, they had no idea what they were entitled to. So I think what the governor is, is doing here, has he signed this yet?
Working on that now.
He's working on, signing it. As soon as he signs it, I think it's just a step forward for, to take care of the veterans and recognize their, their duty. So thanks, Caleb.
Thanks, Caleb. For me, I don't think we owe more respect to anyone than we do our veterans and what they've done for us, putting their lives on the line, and not only now, but many, many years ago, the ones that did it in World War II and Korea and Vietnam and whatever wars. I think they're great people and putting their life on the line so we can be here today and do what we do. So I think this is wonderful, and I hope you keep up the effort, so. Any more questions? Caleb's not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3252 to support the concept of creating local veterans' commissions.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 6.8 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Caleb, and tell the governor, we're looking forward to him to sign it.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to public hearing items. 7.1 is a public hearing, second reading, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2665, and ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code to increase sewer user rates 8.25 percent annually from July 1, 2014 through July 1, 2017, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Martini, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Martini, Assistant Community Services Director. To my left is Andy Hummel, our utility manager. Today before you, for both the public hearing discussion and your potential action, is Bill Number 2665, which is an amendment to Title 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code, wherein staff is requesting an 8.25 percent annual increase in sewer, in base sewer rates, beginning this July and ending July 1 of 2017. This request for an increase in sewer base rates comes from preparation of the capital improvements plan for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, as well as our sewer collection system. As the council's aware, we have endured and survived a couple of scary times at the plant over the last two years, the failure of the electrical system, the near failure of the headworks facility. That has brought to light the need to start a strong investment approach at the sewer treatment plant to both repair and restore the infrastructure. We have spent the last year looking at the potential costs. We hired SES Group to prepare an independent financial study for us. We've worked through that, and on December 2 of last year, staff presented to you in a workshop the results of those findings. I've attached the two cash flow models of importance with the Amoresco Project, without the Amoresco Project, as Exhibits 1 and 2 to my staff report. Additionally, through our discussions at the workshop, staff presented you with different scenarios of raising the base rates for both cases of the Amoresco Project or non-Amoresco Project at the plant. We seem to center around the eight and a quarter percent increase, and therefore, it was staff's opinion that we came out of the workshop to bring forth this amendment to Sparks Title, to change the billing rates for base sewer. Attachments 3 and 4, or the analysis section of my report, shows the actual places in Sparks Municipal Code 13 that will be changed by this ordinance. It affects dwelling in residential units, industrial commercial discharger through the base rate, as well as industrial, commercial, federal, state, and school district discharges without water meters. I prepared tables showing the changes in the quarterly and monthly or per gallon fees, depending on the type, and I'm prepared to discuss them if you'd like to today, and we are available for any questions.
Questions, Mr. Carrigan?
Thanks. On your, on the first page of the ordinance, handout, you know, the handout?
The bill itself?
Yeah. When you take a look at single-family residential, it says 57.92, and then it jumps to 76.43.
Yes, sir.
It's not exactly 8 percent.
No.
So obviously, you forgot a few numbers in there?
No, Councilman Carrigan, when you amend a bill, and this is my understanding, you have to take the bill as exists, or the ordinance as it exists today.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, so that's what it was in 2008.
That's what it was in 2008, so the first place, this is saying effective July 1, 2014.
Okay, because somebody's going to look at that and say, that's not 8 percent, like me.
I, I can understand that.
And then when you look at the next one, right below, it says, single family residential, 57.92, and then multiple family, 57.92?
Yes, sir.
And then the other one's 57.92. Well, everything goes up except for the multi-family, so how did that, what happened there?
I forgot to cover that, I'm sorry, Councilman.
That's okay.
You want to cover that? That's why you're here.
That's why I'm here.
Well, I think if you'll remember, we had a group become before all of us in November of 2010 or 2011, representing multifamily residential projects and tenants here in Sparks. Council directed staff to take a look at multifamily versus single-family residential. We spent some time looking at it, we had a consultant help us. There is a, about an average difference between a single-family home and a typical apartment wherein multifamily residential runs about 80 percent of a single-family residential. Therefore, in Section 130930, I believe, we will set multifamily residential rates at 80 percent of single-family. That's for your consideration today as well.
Okay, and then my last little question is, to make sure that everybody understands this, the only thing that we're raising the rates on today are sewer, so storm drain and flood stay the same?
Yes, sir.
And that would be about, what is it, 15, 80?
Four.
Four residential sewer? Isn't it, I mean, the stamp, this, isn't it?
We're currently 15.85.
Okay, so it's going to be only eight, eight and a quarter percent, or, excuse me, yeah, eight and a quarter percent of that, correct?
Correct. So on July 1 of 2014, the sewer portion of the, the base rate of the sewer portion for a single-family home will go from 15.85 to 17.16. On July 1 of 2015, it will increase to 18.57. On July 1 of 2016, it'll increase to 20.11. And on July 1 of 2017, which is the last scheduled raise or increase per this ordinance, will increase to 21.76.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, anyone else, before we open the public hearing? Mr. Lawson?
Could you bring us a graph on the other sewer rates from Reno and Washoe County? I didn't see it in the report. I think that's important to point out.
May I have the overhead, please, Theresa?
Yeah, can you just go, start at the top and tell, tell me what each one of those lines represents? I don't think, it's hard to read it.
Yeah, I apologize for the resolution. On the left-hand axis is the utility fee per month to the customer. This column is fiscal year 2013. This column is fiscal year 2014, fiscal year 2015, all the way to 2018. The different colored lines, the red line at the top are the projected, or current and projected, single-family home sewer rates for Washoe County. The blue line that's kind of in the middle of this is the current and projected sanitary or sewer rates for the city of Reno. And then the four lines below it are the options that staff presented to the council under each scenario. So the dark green line is the no raise option.
Point to that one, please, I can't see the color.
I'm sorry, Ed. It runs across the bottom and would be at 29.58 per month from fiscal year 2013, which is now over, through 2018. The kind of light green dotted line, right above the heavy green line, is a 5 percent base sewer base flow, base sewer increase, beginning in fiscal year 15 and finishing in the fiscal year 18. The kind of light purple line is the eight and a quarter percent, which is this one, which is proposed in Bill 2665 in front of you this, this afternoon. And then the heavy line, heavy black line here is a 15 percent scenario that we presented to you at the, at the workshop.
So just for, go to 2018, and tell me what the county, Reno, and our rates were going to be?
Okay. The city of Reno and Washoe County both have adopted policies wherein their rates will increase based on CPI. So this is projected based on about 2.1 percent increase in the, in the construction cost index. So in 2018, would you like each scenario, Councilman?
Just the...
Or the eight and a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay. With the proposed eight and a quarter percent increase for Sparks, the utility sewer rates will be 20, or $35.49 per month. The city of Reno's will be approximately 46 in 2018, and Washoe County's will be approximately 51.49.
Okay, so even at the end of this, we're 15 percent lower than Reno?
Yes.
And some 20 or 25 percent lower than Washoe County?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Ratty?
So I didn't see it in the report, but my recollection is it was part of the report for the workshop, is, the challenge that we're faced with is that because we haven't fully funded our capital needs over an extended period of time, that even at 8.25 percent increase, we're still not fully funding the known capital needs in front of us. Is that correct?
Councilwoman Ratty, actually, we presented two scenarios at the workshop. One was with the Amoresco, one was with not. And let me, for the audience behind me and the folks on television, the Amoresco Project I continue to speak about is an energy efficiency upgrade to the plant that's an additional $25 million over, over about the next five or 10 years, five years, actually. The eight and a quarter percent rate increase, base sewer rate increase, would fund how we see the next five years at Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, as well as the sewage collection system, without the Amoresco Project.
At 100 percent?
At 100 percent. The scenario I showed you that included the Amoresco showed, I believe, we would defer about 30 percent of the sewer lines CIP, fully fund Tom Whorf and fully fund the Amoresco Project. Now, at the end of the workshop, council, I feel, gave us direction to continue to look at the Amoresco Project, to look for ways to reduce the simple payback method for each of, of the methods, or for each of the parts of Amoresco, if you will, and then to come back and report to you if we're able to get that simple payback method down. But we're not requesting an approval of Amoresco today. I would, I'd like to make that clear.
And that was going to be my clarification. The action today is just saying 8.25 percent.
Correct.
And 8.25 percent, would 100 percent pay the identified needs for the next, what period of time?
Through fiscal year 2018.
Through fiscal year 2018. And then there'd be a second decision about whether or not to move forward with Amoresco.
And then, there'd be a second decision about whether or not to move forward with Amaresco.
Yes, it is my understanding that we will be in front of this council in February to discuss Amaresco again.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Smith?
John, and you may come forward and say, "We don't want to use Amaresco," or, "We want to use Amaresco." Is that, is that the understanding?
Absolutely. I came away from the workshop understanding that a simple payback method of 20 years was, was not sitting well with the council, and I can understand it. I think in the line of work we're in, when you start looking at something being paid off in 20 years, we start thinking, it's already getting time to start thinking about either rehabbing it or replacing it, so I understand that. At the same time, I think it's very prudent to look at ways of getting two, three, three parts of operational costs at Tom Wharf improved. What we hauled in the landfill, we, we don't have straight control of those costs: energy, I think we all know which way energy will go, and then, our chemical demand. So, anything we can do to help those three things will bring our operational costs down. It's a matter of payback, and it's a matter of us showing you that we think it's a good idea, or perhaps, we wait five years and see if something else comes up, new technology or if things look better. But that's yet to be seen.
You know, I've always felt that City of Sparks has done it right by projecting their increases out. It was five years before this time here.
Yes.
And we were able to do things that the, I know Reno couldn't do, because they didn't have the money to do their infrastructure, when the roads needed to be fixed or something, and Sparks did. So, I'm fully in favor of this. I know people wonder, "Why are you raising taxes?" or something like that, or, "Why are you raising the sewer fees?" It's necessary to maintain what we have, and if we, if we have emergencies, we can handle it.
Thank you.
Ms. Carrigan?
Taxes. Taxes.
Correct. This is a sewer user fee.
Because when you say that, we said that for, you know, somebody said it at Tom Wharf, and we went, everybody went crazy. I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that what Julia said is, I'm just gonna reiterate that, that what we're voting on today is to fund the sewer 100% or CIP 100%. And we're gonna look down the road if you guys can talk us into energy efficient savings.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing. If you want to speak to this particular item, please go to the clerk and fill one of these out, and we'll have you have to speak for or against. I have one speaking card, Mr. Trey Abney from the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon. For the record, Trey Abney, representing the Chamber of Commerce, we support the 8.25% increase, not something you hear out of the chamber a lot, probably.
I'm not gonna note that.
Make it a headline. I attended the workshop, and then, your staff was gracious enough to come over and present to my business advocacy council at the chamber, and they ran through all the scenarios that you saw at the workshop and see here today. And it was very important to us that we have the money available to fully fund your capital improvement projects. Not to bring other issues into this, but I spent the last year of my life working on an effort to partially fund capital improvement projects at the Washtau County School District. And we felt at the time in that issue that you can either pay a little bit now, or you can pay a lot more later when things break down and you have to replace the whole system. I think we've seen some issues with this system in the last year or so. So, we do fully support 8.25% as long, again, as long as it's used to fully fund those CIP. Now, it looks like I'll be coming back in February to watch the Amaresco issue, and this is certainly not anti-Amaresco, anti-conservation at all, if there's a way to do it. You know, in my conversations with staff after presenting, they presented the chamber, if there's a way to do it, and some of your projects are put off a couple of years, past the five years, I mean, I think that's a legitimate conversation to have. But again, our main concern is that this increase be used to fully fund those capital improvement projects. So, I appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trey. We appreciate you being here from the chamber and speaking for the businesses in the community. They're important to us, too, and it's, we need to know what's on their minds, so. Thank you so much for coming here today and showing your support.
Thank you, I love being here. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing no further comments, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson?
Just a quick comment, and what Trey said, I think we've identified something around $100 million worth of money we need to put into the sewer plant, just because of age. And just in the last two years, because of two emergencies, it's cost us over $7 million to keep up with emergency breakdowns. So, we're kind of, as much as I don't want to raise sewer rates, we're kind of stuck, and we have to. And so, with that, if no one else has a comment, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, and we'll have comments. Go ahead.
I recommend to approve Bill Number 2665 and ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code to increase sewer rates 8.25% annually from July 1, 2014 through July 1 of 2017, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan, you want a second?
Yeah, I was gonna make the motion, I had to take the heat off you, but I'll second it.
No, that's okay.
Can I have a motion and a second? A motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Carrigan. Any comments? Just for me, I support this 100%. I don't know that we have to do this, I think we should do this, is the way we ought to put it. It's something that will be remiss if we don't. It's only a matter of time before we have another one of those accidents that we had out there, and I don't think we want to do that. We need to, we need to do these things and make sure our infrastructure is prepared for the future, so. Having said that, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4 to 1, Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it. Good job. Okay, that's about it. Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak in or comments from the public? Seeing none, comments from the city council and city manager? Go ahead, Mike.
I think I saw an email on this. If we are proposing a ballot question for the City of Sparks, wouldn't we have to have that in, Mike? I think I saw an email, did somebody say it was March? Theresa, was that you that put it out? Do you remember what your email said, it was March?
I did send that to you. I believe it was about March 10th, but I'll verify that and send it back out.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know that, Adam? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the Order of Redevelopment Agency Meeting, January 27, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
And Agency Manager Carey?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Number 3, 3.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for December 9, 2013.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Number 4, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period November 21, 2013 through January 8, 2014. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. I'll take it back to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Comments from members of the agency? Seeing none, we are adjourned.